I'd like to call the City of LaPorte Common Council meeting to order on Monday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. It is six P M. Let us begin with the pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman West.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Clerk Treasurer, oh Deputy Clerk Treasurer.
Uh, Councilman Frankie.
Present.
Councilwoman Huffman.
Present.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilman Galloway. Councilwoman Kinesny.
Present.
Councilman Buchanan.
Present.
And Councilwoman West.
Here.
All present.
I should have said Deputy Clerk Treasurer and all. I apologize. Approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
A second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Petitions and comments of citizens. Please keep your comments to three minutes or left. This is not a question and answer. Please stay away from derogatory personal attacks. And we will begin with Robert. Is it Shahan? ShiShan?
No.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Robert Chihoine. I live at three five one six West Small Court in LaPorte, Indiana, four six three five zero. I am here to talk to the council, City of LaPorte, because Fish Trap Lake cannot be here to talk to you. If Fish Trap Lake could come here to talk to you, they would say, why are my lily pads being killed off? The lily pads that are being killed off are big, nice lily pads, beautiful, big leaves, nice shiny green that stand up above the water, sway in the breeze. They have beautiful flowers, about like that, look like a lotus blossom. Acres and acres are killed off and they're all in front of the townhouses that this council approved of a few years ago. And it coincides with their coming there. I mean, I've been fishing at Fish Trap Lake for fifteen years, and I've never seen anything like this. This has just happened. Ugly. I mean, it makes me really sad and angry that this has happened. And, you know, the lake would say, I was here way before you. You know, I was formed ten thousand years ago by a glacier, and I've been in peace and harmony and balance ever since then. And now you've come along and you're destroying that. The lily pads, they provide shelter for fish, especially the small fish. It cools the lake. They provide oxygen. And why was so much killed off? Why, you know, why is there so much dead? So I've got a minute left. I hold you responsible. You okayed it. And it was kind of pushed through where it was supposed to be annexed as our one residential single family. But no, it got annexed, and I didn't mind the annexation, but it was a change in zoning to our to be or something that allowed the townhouses. And the ordinance clearly says it has to come in at the zoning that it originally has, and then it can be changed once it's annexed. Well, that wasn't followed. And so, and in fact, even the Legacy, who, that's, you know, they changed their name to Infinite now, but Legacy withdrew their petition. But somehow that, you know, all is forgiven and, you know, why? Okay, I'm done.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I answer a little bit of this?
Roger Galloway.
At the VFW, we've had somebody come in and get rid of some of the lily pads. That lake is not in the city. It's county, and you have to go through the D and R and county and all that to get approval for it. So it's, you know, it's like it's really not our fault.
Thank you. Sierra Sue Jesh.
Thank you. My name is Sierra Sue Jesh, and I live in the two hundred block of Jefferson Avenue. First, I want to thank Jeff Bachelor and his team. The grass in the yard, abandoned house next door to me was over two feet tall. Jeff's team came over and cut the grass. When I saw someone had broke into the house, I called Jeff, and he came right over and closed the house up for us. I hope the person buying the house at the tax sale gets possession of it soon so he can start fixing it up. Number two, I watched the bid district's meeting of June tenth. The first thing I noticed was that the members did not use their mics, did not turn them on, and you couldn't even hear half of what was being said. I was interested in what, if anything, they were going to do about the problems with the downtown sidewalks and crosswalks. Last year, I tripped and fell on an upraised brick by Smutts Tavern on Michigan Avenue. People sitting nearby helped me up, checked me, and one man went over and pushed the brick back into place. I wasn't injured last year. In May of this year, I tripped on a raised area on a crosswalk, fell down. My son helped me up, and a couple of days later, my left knee was so bad I could barely walk. I went to urgent care when I couldn't get a hold of my nurse. And I still don't know if I'm going to have to pay for anything for urgent care, but I was sent to the orthopedic surgeon, and now I'm in therapy. Both have copays. Who's going to pay my medical bills? And what if I have to have surgery and can't work? Slight differences in the sidewalks and crossings is a serious problem for seniors and the less mobile people. The rumble is not being nitpicking when they complain about it. They are watching out for their residents and anyone that is walking around that rumble area. Thank you.
Sue, thank you.
Mayor, may I respond?
Councilwoman West.
Um, oh.
Did a good job.
Uh, I do apologize for the fact that you were not able to hear what happened at that meeting. I am going to address that tonight in my notes, so, about the pavers. Absolutely.
I will comment too, because Jeff Bachelor often contacts me about legal-related issues. And until he came into that role, I really didn't have appreciation for how difficult his job is. One recent example, and I don't know if Sierra, the house next to you is one of these houses, but there's five or six properties in the city where people, the listed owner has been dead for multiple years now. And it's difficult for us to initiate the process to even get a transfer to somebody because it's.
And I think your mic's off. So I just wanted to point that out that, I mean, we.
Oh, I understand. I know where the person that owned it lives, where he works. He lives in California, works overseas, and that, so no, it's not the city's fault. It is, you know.
That's a different problem that we have, but I, I'm just, until you get into it, you don't have an appreciation for it.
Oh, Jeff and I have numerous conversations. In fact, we talked tonight because the house was opened up again. I closed it and called him, and he said he would see about nailing the door shut. But right now, for him, they're not even telling him when this guy's going to get possession of this house that, you know, bought it at the tax sale, so, you know, he can't find out anything about when something will be done. But he he and his crew are doing a good job, and I appreciate them.
Thank you, Sue. And those are things where we all have to work together, somewhat similar to the state, you know, who is only cutting medians throughout all cities in the state, three times a year. And, you know, when we're looking for perfection, we have been out having to cut the medians throughout. And not only are we getting texts on Sunday from people that were almost in accidents on thirty-nine North, but we need to make sure, and we'll have a chance, because the governor, thank goodness, will be here on the Fourth of July, and we can show him, because this isn't just LaPorte, it's Carmel, it's Portage, it's everywhere in between. So everybody's got to help one another out. We're going to continue to cut those. So with that, Rick Ogilvy did not have a sheet, but because there was not a pen there, I believe, or a piece of paper. So please state your, state your name and address for the record.
Rick Ogilvy, nineteen oh two, Indiana. My wife loves mowing yards. Just so you know. I'm just curious to know if the city and Indot have had any discussions about a crossing on Indiana Ave, south of, south Ave, in that four tenths of a mile, that has no pedestrian crossing? Anyone know if there's been any discussions?
It could question for Mr. Minnick.
But there've been, they continue to have discussions leading up to it. I can't say there's been any change to the specific crossing you were asking about.
I wasn't concerned about change yet. I'm just, whether or not it's.
I don't have any update, but I called Nick, and he should be able to give you an update.
Thank you.
Dennis Nelson. Senior.
I gotta get that rack. I got, I got a seatbelt ticket for my son, so he got to the senior all the time. Uh, my name's Dennis Nelson. I actually live at eleven oh two L Street. Sold my farm, moved to town, so I'm back with you guys.
Welcome.
I have rental properties in town. Most of you know that. Some do, some don't. Had them for over thirty years. I just got two things to talk about, and most of it's just informational, nothing. To start with, the repairs and changes of the sidewalks and the trees, I love it. Some of my trees are getting cut down at my rentals. It should have been cut down ten years ago, putting sidewalks in. God, it's just wonderful. I've lost cars over it to my tenants. So that, that's great. The problem I have with it, though, is if you guys would just, you know, go out and drive around. I don't know who's supposed to be overseeing it. I know that you guys have a lot of problems with, I'll pick on Reeve Riley or people doing the jobs. It's hard for anybody to do quality work anymore. It's not unique in your business or mine. But with that said, if you look around, the driveways are not in line. They're not put back. They tore one of mine out personally that I put in myself. It was in good shape. I didn't even know why they tore it out. And it was fanned out at the end. Now it's just straight up. It's not as white. It's not in the middle of my driveway. I talked with engineering about it. I don't think they're going to tear it back out, but it's the way it is. So I'm not sure if nobody's looking at them or what. Truesdale Avenue is the same way. If you go over there, things just aren't right there. So somebody, you know, and again, I don't know anything about, you know, city business, but somebody needs to be looking at the finished product. Now, there's just one, let's talk about finished product. I also own multiple houses over in the sixteen, eighteen hundred block, Vell Street, K Street. They put the fourteen and sixteenth street in. Fantastic. Yeah, I'm not loving the driveway on sixteenth and Andrew Avenue. My house there doesn't run, I can't say enough positive things. The other day it rains. I go down there. I'm driving through mud puddles on a brand-new road, in the middle of the road. Why? I mean, really, it's just going to rot the road because it's going to stand there. That's a brand-new road. And I'm not picking on the people who are supposed to watch, but somebody's not paying attention, whether it be your contractor or somebody that's responsible at the city. I don't know, and I'm not trying to point fingers. But there were things, them roads on sixteenth street down between J and K, they're not going to last long because they got standing water. So, that's that. The other thing I have is I have a house at one twenty-one Cosiasko. I've had it thirty years. Next door at one nineteen Cosiasko, I have an older lady, nice lady. I know all the older people over there, super people. They just don't have any money. She put an addition on the house. She's never done nothing with it. There's animals crawling in and out of it. I don't even know how she's living in it. Hasn't been covered in at least ten years. I'm trying to rent the house right now. First thing people ask me is, what's going on with the house next door? If you look at all three bedrooms, there's holes big enough you can crawl through. Okay? I'm not picking on Jeff and his guys. Jeff does, and I don't know if I can say this, one hell of a job. Okay? And when I call him, ninety percent of the time, he's there or he's doing something the best he can. I just got to finish with this.
One nineteen, you said?
One nineteen, Cosiasko.
Is the issue.
Yeah. And if you go by there, you'll understand what I'm saying. Last but not least, honestly, as I've said to the mayor, everybody that I've talked to, I'm here to help. I have nice properties. I don't have any garbage. Okay? And the ones that are our garbage, been garbage for forty years. It's not going to change. So thank you.
Thank you.
All positive, nothing negative.
Appreciate it. Dean White, please come forward.
Yes, good evening. I know the City of LaPorte needs housing, and I've been buying up properties lately, and I've got a couple on Rumly Street. Well, one of them is at six oh five Rumly, and you'll see a picture on your counter there that there's been a giant maple tree that has raised the sidewalk about eleven inches. And I finally got the city to go ahead and cut it down, and they've done some grinding. However, I've had a sewer repairman out there three times now with a new tenant. I completely put all new electrical plumbing, redid the whole interior of the house and windows and such, but the sewer guy says he can, that the sewer line has been damaged by this large root system here. He has only got about a one and a quarter inch diameter for the sewer for a four-bedroom, two-bathroom house. And so I recently talked to Jerry Jackson. He said he would talk to you about that probably tomorrow. Yet the other thing I came in front of you was about the Vista View. I understand that the city's partnering with the county to make that clearing. However, I talked to Rich Rosinski yesterday, or, well, maybe Friday. And he said that the city is holding things up, starting, they have some trees they have to cut or something. And I wanted to see if there's any catalyst that I can initiate here to get things started. If the county's willing to do all this, you know, a lot of work, you know, the city shouldn't hold them up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure if that's factual from the county, that the city's holding up anything there, but appreciate that. And I happen to be at the Rumly property today. I met Jerry out there, just so I had a perspective as well from there. So Jerry and I will discuss. So with that, I think, was there anybody else that wanted to sign a card that didn't? Thank you.
There was no public comment on online.
None?
Nope.
Standing Committee reports. Counsel President Frankie.
Redevelopment Commission meets on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, in Council Chambers, five fifteen P M. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Huffman.
Thank you. The Sustainability Commission will be meeting Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, at four P M. in Council Chambers. End of report.
Councilwoman Ficus.
Park Board met on Wednesday, June twelfth. Discussion was had regarding the Scott Park Residential Development. The purchase option agreement with Advantix Development Corporation was voted on by the board and unanimously accepted. Todd Taylor attended the meeting to give an update. Oh, we have a time limit? Todd Taylor attended the meeting to give an update on the Soldier's Memorial Park Well Project. Two wells have been drilled, and one has been tested so far. The well shows both good productivity and good water quality. When the Craven Drive to Orchard Drive phase of the Chessey Trail begins, there will be restrooms and a storage area added at the Soldier's Memorial Park trailhead. The new building will be funded by the Healthcare Foundation and will be approximately six hundred square feet. Approval was given for paving construction to begin the kayak launch project at Kiwanis Teletown Park. They will be responsible for concrete work and lawn restoration. Security cameras will be installed in our parks, beginning with the park office and the maintenance building. New Age Telecom will be the provider. The Park and Rec Department will submit a grant for funding, and cameras will be placed as funds are available. The next Park Board meeting will be Wednesday, July seventeenth, four P M. at the Park Office. And then finally, Traffic Commission will meet on Tuesday, July second, five P M. at the police station.
Councilman Galloway.
Mayor's Veterans Committee had the brick dedication on June eighth. It was pretty well-attended. Everything went long, fine. And on June twentieth, sorry about that, June eleventh, at the Police Merit Commission, Officer Isaiah Rayes got sworn in.
Councilwoman West.
The Bid Board met on June tenth, and all the flowers have been planted and are downtown planters, and I think they look absolutely beautiful. And there was discussion and a motion approved for replacing the downtown sidewalk pavers. This will take some time. Craig has, he's been out surveying all that, and the spot in front of Spencer's and Rumly are definitely top priority, and so we'll just work through that and get those pavers repaired. Some of the downtown trash receptacle lids are in need of replacements. And Amy Ficus presented a quote for those repairs, and a motion was approved to repair the lids. Also, repairs to the electric on the Stitch for our downtown city events, events and the Farm and Forage Market were approved, and we're all set for electricity for all of our downtown events. Craig Phillips is working with Hitchcock Design to submit a request for proposal to the city to pick an alley for the test block for our long-term planning. U E A, through the U E A, the city is announcing some really cool things about to happen in our downtown with the coordination of the Lebesnik Center. The first is a sculpture in Plaza six eighteen, which will be placed before the Fourth of July. The second is the work that will soon begin on the mural on Smiles and Jefferson, and we took a tour inside that building, and that is absolutely beautiful inside there. And the third is placing window designs in our vacant buildings in downtown. There will be a public meeting on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth, from eleven thirty to one at City Hall to meet with the artist and also the Lebesnik Center for the Arts to help create the mural that reflects LaPorte. So please come and join us. That is open to the public. In their next meeting, which is tomorrow, LaPorte Interim Superintendent, Dr. Peggy Hickley, will present a special grant request for financial assistance with the parking lot expansion at the administrative offices at Boston Middle School, and we will get an update on the city's dumpster activity from Jeff Bachelor and other pending items. Fire Merit Commission, July's Fire Merit meeting will take place on July tenth instead of our regular meeting that was scheduled for July third due to the festivities over the Fourth of July holiday.
Councilman Buchanan.
The next Historic Reservation Commission meeting is tomorrow, June eighteenth, here in Council Chambers at five thirty. End of report.
Councilwoman Kinesny.
Well, it's been a busy month for the Airport Authority. Just last week, they successfully wrapped up this year's aviation camp, where sixty students came through. Topics that were presented were those on solar, air traffic control. LaPorte native and fighter pilot Bruce Allen put on a presentation. They also respectively took field trips down to Purdue Lafayette and then the LaPorte Library Exchange for different activities aviation-related. Really exciting stuff, which transpires tomorrow. Tomorrow is the Air Race Classic twenty twenty-four. I'm going to read directly from this because I don't want to botch it up, but the LaPorte Municipal Airport is thrilled to be the first stop in this year's Air Race Classic. Racers will depart from Carbondale, Illinois on June eighteenth and head towards LaPorte Municipal Airport. Volunteers will be timing, fueling, and feeding the racers. The public is welcome and definitely encouraged to come to watch and cheer on these amazing racers. I know it's a hot one, but we're asking if the non-racers remain outside of the terminal building so the racers have access to the resources they need to do a quick turn and head back to the next stop of the race. We expect the racers to begin arriving around nine thirty and the heaviest traffic between nine thirty and eleven thirty A M. Central. What to expect? Timing for the first leg of the race will end each racer at a specific point at the airport. So racers will come in full throttle, about two hundred feet off the ground for their timing, and then head out to cool off the engines before landing. When they depart for the next leg of the race, they'll take off from LaPorte, build speed, and then come back over at full throttle again for their time to begin for the next leg. There is a link on the website if you want to watch from a distance and kind of see where the planes are and when they'll be arriving. But certainly, big buzz around the community. And then lastly, fuel sales are rocking, so we're getting back to where they need to be. The next Airport Authority meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July tenth, at five fifteen at the airport.
Great stuff. Public hearing and introduction of a resolution for an additional appropriation. Councilman Galloway.
Your Honor, I'd like to read a resolution for the first and only time.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Galloway.
Additional appropriation for Fund twenty-four forty-five DEA Asset Forbitter Fund. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget. Now therefore, Section one, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, LaPorte, Indiana, LaPorte County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. DEA Asset Forbitter Fund. Two four four five dash three seven zero dash two four one point zero zero zero. Amount requested, sixteen thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and ten cents. Amount approved, sixteen thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and ten cents.
Chief Buell is here this evening to speak to this briefly. Briefly? I didn't think you'd mind that.
You know, I'm going to be brief. This was equipment that goes into the squad cars connected with the body cams. And I can't speak as to why, because it happened before I took office. They miscounted the number of squad cars that need to be outfitted with this. So it's an additional six cars. We had to make that order while utility was here installing the rest of the cars to just make it go on time. We had everything done, so.
Questions for Chief Buell?
Are these all installed at this point?
They're all installed, and this is the GPS. It's the real-time communication, recording, everything. If you don't have that, the body cams aren't going to do you any good.
I heard that this new brand, you guys are pretty happy with it?
Uh, there's, there are a few glitches right now, but that's to be expected, and we're working through those, and Assistant Chief Drangmeister is working with utility to get these things resolved, along with Roscoe Huffman.
Further questions for Chief? Hearing none, I would now like to open this up to a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this matter? We do have an affidavit of publication.
It was published in the Herald Dispatch on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to pass the resolution?
Still moved.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Councilwoman West, introduction of a resolution to transfer funds.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce the resolution read for the first.
Is your microphone on? I apologize.
Nope, I turned it back off. Thank you. Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety. Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman West.
Resolution to transfer funds within the twenty twenty-four budgets. Whereas there are additional monies needed in certain line items in the twenty twenty-four budgets in order to pay for essential services and obligations. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, that the following transfers be made within the following budgets for the year of twenty twenty-four. General account, one one zero one dash three one one, from two one one office supplies to three ninety-one other services for nineteen dollars. And a transit, two five zero one dash three zero four, from five oh two benefits to five oh one salaries, in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars. From five oh two benefits to five oh nine communications and miscellaneous, one thousand dollars. End of resolution.
Questions? So the general, the nineteen dollars was for communications, a small amount there, and then transit because we focused on driving more dollars into dispatching and drivers, especially part-time, not full-time, so being able to move benefits dollars. So being able to move benefits dollars into payment to those, uh, that are with us part-time?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Other business, as you've heard, uh, the governor will be with us on the Fourth of July parade, as well as John Hancock. It's the thirty-fifth year of...
Prancer.
Prancer, everybody knows. And, uh, we are also working on maybe some, at some point, because I know they're planning on a winter celebration of that thirty-fifth year and the goal being, um, to the young girl that is now older, uh, is planning on being here. But the goal also to many females, I guess, throughout the community that want to see Sam Elliott again. Uh, that seems to be a popular person, uh, as the calls have come in, is Sam Elliott going to be here? And so we've had a...
Why Bert's growing his mustache?
Um, we've had, uh, a couple of conversations with his agent, with her, yeah, with his agent. And, uh, we're going to see what we can do to make sure that, uh, he could be here. Any other comments?
Yes, uh, this Saturday, the twenty-second, we got a car show from four to seven, then middle of the road from seven to ten at the VFW.
And food available.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else you'd like to say?
Uh, just, uh, motion to adjourn?
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.